At this time, I'd like to draw the meeting of the LaPorte County Commissioners to order with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the law. To the United States of America, with which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Diane, could I have the roll call, please?
Sure. Commissioner Cora?
Present.
Commissioner Mathias?
Present.
Commissioner Morzynski?
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, let's consider our agenda for this evening. Dr. Cora?
Madam President, I'd like to add the following items in light of all the things that are going on with the COVID-19. And this will all be new business. One—
Next on the agenda, let's— Whoops, sorry, sorry, sorry.
—consider supplement—
Wait a second, sorry.
Okay.
Could you— I don't even know where he is on— You want to take care of this?
Get it with your hammer.
Sorry, this new technology we're trying this evening.
You got a hammer there.
Yeah.
So, in the new business—
My apologies.
—H, item H, is considered supplement to Economic Development Corridor, Mitch Bishop. I is considered a LaPorte County COVID-19 employee and operations policy. She is considered a resolution requesting governor of Indiana to provide immediate relief to local government to permit us to best serve our constituents during the COVID-19 emergency. And K is considered a resolution urging the Indiana Election Commission to authorize a no-excuse mail-in voting for the 2020 elections. Madam President, with those additions, I make a motion to adopt the amended agenda.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second to amend the agenda as Dr. Cora described. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
A motion has passed. Moving on, consider the approval of the March 4, 2020 minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion has carried. Next on the agenda, consideration of claims. First, we have payroll. Ms. Gonzalez?
Payroll ending March 13, 2020, $1,181,551.68. And for miscellaneous claims, $1,053,439.49.
Madam President, we all have reviewed those claims, and I make a motion to approve the claims as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the claims as presented. They have been reviewed and are ready for passage. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
A motion has passed. Next on the agenda, and I just want to clarify a few things, we have public comment. This is the public comment that comes at the front end of our meeting. And again, want to refresh everyone's memory about public comment. Public comment is a standard that this commission has set because we want to be transparent in government. We want to welcome our community to make comments on issues of importance to them. This is public comment at the front end of the meeting. You may also comment on items such as resolutions and ordinances on the agenda that will be coming further up in our business. We expect civility, whether you are commenting online or you are commenting here in the room. Because of our coronavirus outbreak and concern, we have advanced social distancing, so there aren't very many people in the room, a little over maybe 12, maybe 15 at the most. We have placed the chairs very far apart from each other. We appreciate those of you who are watching at home. We have department heads here using Zoom, and then we have members of the public who are listening to us on Facebook Live. However, even if you are not here in this room, we ask that you be civil in your discourse, that you follow our resolution that asks for you to be respectful, to not use crude, lewd, or obscene words, to not bring personnel matters to this floor, because there is a process for that, and our employees are protected by personnel and HR laws. We should not be discussing people's personnel issues here on the floor. So with that in mind, unless I have forgotten anything, and my commissioners would want to add that, I would like us to advance on public comment here, and then later in the meeting, we'll have further public comment. Dr. Cora, Mr. Morzynski, if you have anything you'd like to add to that, please feel free.
Madam President, I just want to echo that we would like to—you know, social media has been there, and it has—it's like, you know, since I come from a medical background, when you give a medicine, it has benefits and it has side effects. So, social media is the same. And how well we use it, it's up to us. And if this works out well, and if people are respectful, and the engagement is positive with positive feedback and ideas to make our community better, I think we need to continue this process. But if it degenerates into spreading lies and rumors and stuff like that, I think we need to reevaluate it.
Thank you. So, this is our pilot attempt to be plenty modern, right?
Right, yeah.
Anything else, anyone? Okay, let's move on. At this time, I'd like to open public comment. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak at this time? This is general public comment that doesn't follow an agenda item later on in the agenda. You can speak on those. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak at this time? Are there any members of the public who wish to speak at this time? All right, hearing none, we'll move on. Next on the agenda, we have department head reports and department head comments. First, a department head that I'm going to call to the DS is the Community Corrections. Board President, Mr. Klosowski.
Steve Klosowski, Chairman of the Board, LaPorte County Community Corrections. Thank you, Madam President, Vice President Cora, Commissioner Morzynski. A little backstory, brief backstory about why I'm in front of you today. In early February, the 5th to be exact, Rob Neary, who was the executive director at the facility, submitted his letter of resignation, which went into effect March 2. Immediately following that acceptance of his letter, the Human Resources Department posted his position, and at that time, 14 different applications were received for the position. Human Resources pared that number down to 10 after doing some background checking and so forth. Of those 10, six of the candidates—
That wasn't me.
Six of those candidates were internal candidates, four of those were external candidates. On Wednesday, March 4, all 10 of those candidates were interviewed by a panel of seven advisory board members, including myself. It was a structured interview process with the same questions being asked of all 10 candidates. All 10 brought something unique to the table. It was a very long day for those of us that were involved with that, and our dinner consisted of Oreos and Nutter Butters.
Now, that sounds healthy.
What's that? Well, you do what you have to do, right?
You do what you have to do for service to others.
Following the interviews, the panel determined top three candidates, two of which were external, one was internal. At that time, extensive background checks were done of those three individuals, and also references were called to check on those three. Following the second set of questions, we were posed to the two top candidates that we had determined. One was internal, one was external. All this brings us to this moment in time. On behalf of the Advisory Board of the LaPorte County Community Corrections Program, I submit to this board our recommendation for the position of executive director. She's a lady from South Bend by the name of Ms. Rochelle Brown. Okay, Ms. Brown brings 14 years of experience in criminal justice field. She possesses a Master of Science in Administration and Justice and Security. She is currently employed by the St. Joseph County Adult Probation Department with a caseload of 130 clients with drug and alcohol charges. We feel she is the right person to face the challenges in place at LaPorte County Community Corrections.
Madam President, before I make a motion, I want to thank the President of the Advisory Board, Mr. Klosowski, and all the members who served initially on the interview committee and also the entire board, because they spent a lot of time thinking through this process because this was not an easy decision. You know, there are so many things to consider, and also, among the other things, we are also looking at some of the challenges Community Corrections faces right now, and who would be best to handle it. And we had some, two very good candidates, but ultimately, we all felt that this particular candidate would serve the Community Corrections Department well. With that, I make a motion to accept the recommendation of the Advisory Board of Ms. Rochelle Brown.
I'll second your motion.
So, we have a motion and a second to accept the recommendation from the Community Corrections Board in this new hire. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion has passed. Thank you very much for your service, and please express our gratitude to your entire board. Really appreciate it.
I will do so. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, any other department heads who wish to speak at this time? We probably will discuss the coronavirus in detail when we have our commissioners' comments because I know we were blessed to have a medical doctor as a commissioner, and I know he has a few things to share. There's a few people on Zoom, department heads who may want to weigh in. So, if you want to save your information for that area of discussion, feel free. But other department heads who wish to speak at this time?
Good evening.
Good afternoon. Rick Brown, MS 4 Coordinator, your favorite MS 4 Coordinator.
Absolutely.
Wanted to let you know a couple things and update you. Our outreach program is just going phenomenal. We are now less than seven months, and we're over 204,000 hits on it. I've been asked to for a half hour speak at the Indiana MS 4 Program in Indianapolis just to let them know what we're doing. My assistant, Arianna, is just excellent, and she really deserves most of the credit. I'm kind of the guy in the background that wears the funny costumes and makes a message and then takes the message into stormwater. Also, I wanted to let you know that in case you guys don't, I believe Mr. Friedman probably knows, but MS 4 has also come up with $24,000, and we're matching this with the city $24,000 to do a $48,000 study on the Schur's Ditch. That's been kind of a problematic area, and we're jumping into it with both feet into the water, so to speak, to see what we can come up with, what needs to be cleared, what doesn't, and we're going to be going down all the way at least to 250 South. I believe that's 250 South, quite a ways out, so we can get any obstructions and stuff done. I just want to update everybody on that. Okay?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Any other department heads who wish to speak at this time? Any department heads that have logged in that have non-coronavirus-related information they'd like to share? All right, let's move on to the agenda. We'll get through the agenda, and then we'll focus on our health concerns and some other issues that are important to the public. Under request—do we have any requests at this time? Moving on, old business, consider the second reading of the Commercial Vehicle Ordinance. Sheriff John Boyd and Attorney Nuremberg.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So, we had first reading back in January, went really well. Officer Alcock worked with various department heads and got some significant feedback. We revised the ordinance following the public stakeholder meeting. We had a relatively good turnout for that. People were very candid about their concerns. We went back, we regrouped—
Could you speak into the microphone, please?
I will. Trying to keep my distance. So, we went back and regrouped, and you saw the revised version. I think it's—personally, I find it to be very solid. I trust that law enforcement agrees. And I've had no comments, no calls, no concerns articulated from anyone.
Okay.
So, that's indicative of a pretty solid foundation, I thought.
Thank you. Sheriff, or—
Any comments?
Go ahead.
The same. I haven't had any concerns or complaints or issues that I don't think we've adequately addressed in the second draft. I guess we have.
Thank you. Sheriff?
I just find this much more enforceable, and I think it'll go a long way to preserve our county roads and our bridges as well.
So, you see it as enforceable? That's a huge positive?
Yes, yes, we do so, yes.
No use passing laws that can't be managed?
Exactly.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Since this is an ordinance, are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this ordinance at this time? Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this ordinance at this time? This is an ordinance, I'm pending specific sections of LaPorte County Ordinance, Chapter 70, and repealing Chapter 77. It has to do with roads and traffic and county road policy. Laura, could you maybe just give like a three-sentence overview for anyone who may not remember what we were discussing at our last meeting in regards to this ordinance?
Overview is to the provisions and necessary—
No, just what the purpose of the ordinance is.
Summary.
Certainly, yes. As you had articulated clearly, the problem we had before was the lack of enforcement ability. So, this set the foundation for that, and we set out the provisions pertaining to weights and length and the bridges, and particularly Seaver's Road was an issue. The no trucks was a big deal for Ryan, obviously, and the posted weight limit signs where there were postings. We needed that to be done. It flowed really well. Boy, I wish I could sum it up a little bit better.
No, that's great.
Nine pages, so it's really hard. That's why, thank goodness, Officer Alcock did gather the flow chart, which helps to give a broad view of how it flows, which will, I think, is going to make it really handy for people who have a hard time grappling with all the different provisions.
Madam President, as part of your approval or consideration tonight, as Laura indicates, they have worked mightily on a flow chart, which should help the regulated community respond to this. The proposed permit is part of the package as well that you would be in. I know they've worked many, many hours trying to come up with something that was usable, user-friendly, but the flow chart, I think, will really help as folks try to adapt to it and conform to the provisions of the ordinance.
Thank you.
Madam President, I make a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading.
I would second that. I did get a couple of calls at our office about some of the truck traffic that we experience on kind of a daily basis. Tankered trucks, without naming any names, but businesses on or near Two and Fair Road or a business a little further down the road on Two, that they're using it regularly, and they're concerned about that. And both parties that called me said, "Thank you for doing something," but they said it's only going to be effective if we have somebody keeping an eye on it.
Enforcement.
If we have some enforcement. And I explained that we're on it, and since it's new, I'm sure that right away, we'll probably be taking a pretty close look at it, but you can't be out there every day all the time, unless you want to be, I guess. I will second that motion then.
So, we have a motion and a second on the floor of the second reading of the Commercial Vehicle Ordinance. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ordinance has passed. Thank you for your hard work on this. Thank you so much.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay.
Did you ask for public comment?
Yes, I did. Next on the agenda, consider on second reading the ordinance establishing the Cougar Road, which is 700 East, as a one-way street between State Road 2 and New Prairie High School. Mike Yakula from INDOT is here, and we will have a brief public hearing, our ability for public comment before we vote. So, Mike.
Yes, again, as per the previous meeting, and we also had the workshop, this is a solution to a safety problem that's been going on for decades out there near New Prairie High School. But of course, traffic volumes and the amount of trucks on the roads have only increased over years. So, to prevent motorists, particularly the younger drivers, from trying to pull out onto State Road 2 at Cougar Road, where we've got the hill to the east that limits sight distance as they try to get out of there, you know, they've asked for traffic—the public has asked for traffic signals out in this area at each intersection of Cougar Road and State Road 2, as well as Cougar Road and US 20. And we've never been able to get signal warrants with the split of traffic coming from the school in each direction. So, again, my predecessor at INDOT had come up with the solution to force traffic leaving the school to go north towards US 20. That then justifies the signal at US 20 to help people safely get out onto the highway network and efficiently with that signal, and then again, with making the adjustments at each intersection. INDOT, I also want to add, is spending a million dollars in improvements between the two intersections, including the signal itself.
Could you also summarize, Mike, the public comment process? Because I was at the hearing, the large meeting, community meeting you had last summer, and then there's been some incremental meetings as well. So, could you just quickly, in a sentence, or to summarize that public process, please?
Yes, we did. We held a public information meeting out at the middle school, and I think the biggest note was, you know, a lot of people that were either middle of the road or borderline against it came away in support of the project after seeing our presentation and all the reasoning that goes behind it. You know, there are definitely still a few folks that are going to have to drive a few minutes out of their way, depending where they're going and coming back from. So, you know, you can't make everybody happy, but there was some good feedback on it.
All right.
Basically, you know, Madam President, from the workshop and all the information you have given us, it's a safety issue.
Absolutely.
It's a safety issue.
Yes.
And I know there's a little bit of inconvenience, and I understand and I appreciate that, but I think safety comes first, you know? So, that's the reason why I think we need to go ahead and move forward with it.
Completely agree.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on the ordinance at this time? Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on the ordinance at this time? Bailey, do we have any comments? Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to approve on the floor to consider Cougar Road as a one-way street between State Road 2 and New Prairie High School. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion has passed. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, consider preliminary lease approval and lease agreement with LaPorte County Building Corporation regarding financing for the Michigan City Courthouse renovations and construction. Patty Zellmer from Ice Miller, I believe, is—
Being represented by somebody else.
I'm available via Zoom. Can you hear me?
Yes, Patty, I can hear you. I was going to say, this young man does not look like Patty. But we can hear you, and so please feel free to do your presentation, and I'm sure he'll support you.
Well, thank you for allowing me to attend via Zoom. This is my first public meeting via Zoom, so I'm learning, maybe along with everyone else that's connected here. But I've been able to hear everything and see your meeting very well.
Great.
So, it's working good on my end. This is really step one in what is the financing process for the Michigan City Courthouse project. And just to give folks a high-level overview, folks have been looking at the necessary improvements and working with engineers and others to decide what needs to be constructed at the Michigan City Courthouse and renovated. And that process took a period of months, and folks came to a conclusion as to what was to be done. And so, we're now at the point where we have a defined project, if you will, and we're ready to start the financing steps. And the structure of this transaction is set up as a lease financing, and it has lots of steps, but it has a good benefit in that the amount of the bond issue will not count towards the constitutional debt limit of the county. So, in a lease financing structure, a not-for-profit building corporation is created, and that building corporation issues the bonds and constructs the project, and then leases the project to the county, and the county pays the building corporation through lease rental payments, which are basically and exactly like the bond payments. So, we've taken some preliminary steps on financing matters, which include creation of a building corporation, worked with Shaw on that aspect, and they solicited folks who were willing to serve as board members. It's a three-member board. That building corporation has now been incorporated with the Secretary of State in Indiana. And this resolution that you have before you is now step one for the Board of Commissioners. And in a lease transaction, the board has a role, as does the county council has a role. So, we've got steps for each body to take, and then the building corporation and that board also is a third body that has to take action as we move through this. And one of the important documents that exists in this type of structure is what we call the lease agreement. And that sets out all the terms for what the project is, how the lease rental payments are going to be paid, what is securing the lease rental payments from the county standpoint, how you're going to pay for your lease rental payments, things like that. So, what we have before the board, and there were three documents that we intended to have in front of you tonight, was a timetable that shows all the steps to get from point A to point closing on the financing. The second document is a resolution for this board to consider for adoption this evening. And the third document is this lease agreement. And that is basically an attachment to the resolution because the board, by language in this resolution, is giving its preliminary approval of this lease. And that's basically step one, and it allows the county to then move forward and publish notice to have a public hearing on the lease. Are we still together?
Yes.
Yes, we hear you.
Okay, good. I just had a few little things breaking in.
Okay.
So, the resolution itself is basically, you know, three pages of text, and various goals that are required by state law, some of them are required by federal tax laws, and I can go through those with you. I can go through each section specifically, or if you would rather that I not do that, and you just want to ask questions, I can do that now.
Thank you, Patty. Shaw, do you want to jump in and just give us a summary? We've had so many meetings on this. I just want the members of the public who are listening to realize that this is—there's nothing new in any of the documents that we have in front of us. We've had copious meetings, conversations, phone conferences, so that we would really have a clear understanding of all of the next steps. If you could summarize for members of the public who might be listening from our perspective what we're considering this year.
Well, as you observe, Madam President—
Thanks, Patty.
—members of the commission, this is the result of a number of public hearings, various public meetings, where both the county commission and the county council have committed to the renovation of the Michigan City Courthouse. It is through a combination of financing and roughly 8 million in cash upfront. The rest will be financed through this lease financing option, as Ms. Zellmer indicates. This way, under using the building corporation that has been established, we are not, you know, overtaxing the county's debt limit so that we do have the ability to go out if we need to debt finance some other project at some point down the road. Lease financing now is a traditional way of helping to construct these types of projects. This has been done with a full consent, awareness, and authorization of the county council, and we're asking for consideration. We've got our financial advisor as well here today from Baker Tilly. Part of what Jason and his partners have provided is kind of a summary. Under the project costs, there's really 22 million, really 23 million in net proceeds available for the project. There's an underwriter's discount, allowance for bond issuance, total project cost of 22,800. And so, the package before you indicates cash on hand of the 8.4 million and lease rental of 14,490. What you're also doing is authorizing a not-to-exceed figure in terms of annual use of the certified shares, and I'll let you address that a little as well, since that's part of the project that we're presenting.
So, Mr. Zellmer?
Thank you. Andy Mouser with Baker Tilly here. I work closely with—
Can you speak into the mic?
Oh, sure. Sorry. Andy Mouser with Baker Tilly. I work closely with Jason Zellmer in our office, so glad to be here this evening. Wanted to just provide you kind of a quick estimate of what we think the financing could look like. I know in your resolution this evening, you would be approving several kind of not-to-exceed parameters. We do anticipate that the actual bond issue, if you issued today, would look better than those maximum parameters that you're approving. These are kind of crazy times, not only in the healthcare world— These are kind of crazy times, not only in the healthcare world, but also in the bond markets as well. So it's a little bit hard to judge, based on these interest rates, what it would look like if you were to issue today, but we do think that interest rates today, and once the financial markets settle down, hopefully will be much better than what you see in these schedules. But kind of looking at page three, this takes a look at the estimated payback of the bonds. So it's over, actually less than a 15-year term, right around 14 and a half years. We're currently estimating interest rates ranging from about 1.95% on the short maturities to 3.05% on the long end. So that would give you a fixed net interest rate, maybe around 2.6%, 2.8%, which then results in a total annual payment, once your full payments would begin, once the project's complete, of right around $1.3 million. So in your resolution this evening, and in the lease, you would be approving a maximum lease rental payment of $1,450,000. But again, based on current interest rates, and we do think there's probably still some cushion in these, again, your actual payment would be more in the $1.3 million range. So that gives you some flexibility for market movement here in the next few months.
So while there's a cap on the high end, there's no low end, because we've seen the feds taking some really drastic measures. So that would reflect well on our project, just for public clarity there.
Correct. In fact, interest rates are down right now. The difficulty is, rates have been down so quickly that a lot of bond buyers are kind of sitting out and waiting and waiting for things to stabilize. But we did sell a bond issue, actually one week ago today, that was 12 years, so a little bit shorter than what you're looking at, but it was a taxable bond issue, which would tend to have higher rates, and it sold at a flat 2%. So again, with this estimate in the 2.6% to 2.8% range, we hope that there's, you know, 50, 60, maybe more basis point cushion in those rates. So, but you're correct, until you actually sell bonds, nothing will be locked in, and we anticipate the bond sale sometime in June of this year. And then, as Shaw mentioned, it is anticipated that the bonds will be paid from your certified shares, local income tax. So on page four, you can see that you've, for 2020, your certified collections are right around $2.8 million. And again, with the estimated annual payment of right around $1.3 million, you have well over two times coverage to make your bond payments. So that gives you obviously flexibility. It gives you the safety on this bond issue, but then it also gives you the flexibility for future projects, should you, you know, have interest in using that same stream.
And I should say, too, the auditor is very comfortable with this level of coverage, that we've got that kind of excess left after our bond payment every year.
Right.
Madam President, I have a couple of questions. Coming to the interest rates, is this a variable interest rate, or is it fixed?
It's fixed. So you do see here, you see different rates on the shorter maturities and different rates on the longer maturities. Those will all be fixed.
Okay.
So typically, on a bond issue of this size, you would go out to the market, and you would have, you know, banks that may purchase the short end, you may have insurance companies purchase the further end, so you're going to have different investors on different pieces, but all those rates will be fixed. So the rate will not change for the 15-year term.
And from what you're seeing in the markets, you anticipate a 50 to 60 basis point reduction in the rates that you have quoted here?
We would hope so. Certainly, we can't predict rates, and even today, I mean, I couldn't predict if you were to sell today what rates would be, but just kind of based on similar deals we've seen here within the last month, we do think that there's definitely some cushion in these numbers.
And the interest rates will be fixed on the day you're going to float these bonds, and that'll depend on when we do the paperwork? Is that what it is?
Correct. So I think your timetable in front of you has a bond sale in early June, and then we would close on the bonds on June 25th.
On the June 25th. It depends on what the rates are on June 25th, then?
Correct. And it would actually be when you sell bonds, so you would sell in early June, and then even though you're not closing until late June, the rates would be fixed up until that closing date. So yeah, sometime here in the next two to three months.
Madam President, before I make my motion, I also want to thank, there was a committee who worked tirelessly for months and months to put this whole thing together, and they're led by our auditor, Joey Winski, and I want to thank all of them and the council members. This has been going on for a long time, and I'm glad it's come together and look forward to this renovation. And one of the things I want the public to know also is that the cost was pretty high when we first started, and we all put our heads together, and with the help of our consultants, we were able to cut down the cost quite a bit, so.
I think it was helpful, too. This commission said to the consultants, the engineers, and the architects, "Go back, sharpen your pencils, you got to do better than that," and so they did it two or three times.
Yeah, I was going to say, there was a time where the consultants had to get a message, too, that there was only, this was our taxpayer dollars, and we needed to be extremely, you know, conscious of that, and they sharpened their pencils.
I give them credit, they really worked tirelessly.
Yes, they sure did. Commissioner Morzinski?
I was at a few of those meetings, it got a little contentious, but we got it done.
I make a motion to adopt this.
I would second your motion, sir.
So we have a motion and a second on the floor to consider the preliminary lease approval and lease agreement with the LaPorte County Building Corporation regarding financing. Because this is such a big issue, even though it's not an ordinance or resolution, I'm just going to stop for a moment and ask if, are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this at this time? Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this at this time? All right, hearing none. We have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The approvals have been passed, and we're looking forward to some really great work. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patty.
Thank you, I appreciate it. There is actually a resolution that needs to be signed, so you should have that.
Okay.
And page four is the signature page.
Yeah, we'll take care of it.
We've got it, thank you.
You've got it, perfect. Thank you, I appreciate you letting me do it through Zoom. Have a good evening and stay safe.
You as well, thank you.
Thanks so much.
Congratulations on your first Zoom meeting.
You're all modern now, Ms. Zellmer.
Yeah.
Right. Thank you, everyone who's online. I appreciate everyone hitting their mute button. I see that most of you have done that, and that's terrific. That allows for us to be able to hear everyone, so thank you for that. Moving on to new business, consider the Marquette Trail contract extension of the current deadline. Mr. Bishop, I believe you are on the line, or Jay, are you presenting on this?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay.
Hello?
Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so this is just a timeline, timeframe extension of the current Marquette Trail plan, running north of 12 from roughly Mirror Road.
Took his picture on there, now his picture's off.
Hello? See? Not very good. They lost him.
I can hear, I could just hear him.
I think it's, with regard to Mitch, I believe it's a bandwidth issue, and that's, again, it's back to the technology issue, but he still shows as participating.
Yep. We hear you.
Hello, you hear me?
Go ahead, Mitch.
I fell off there. Yeah, basically, it's just a timeframe extension of the current contract between Endot and the Port County. It was only good for two years, all the money's in place, it's just addition of two years on the existing contract.
Okay.
That's to build out the Marquette Trail from roughly Mirror Road north of 12 to the state line.
All right.
About 1.1 miles.
Madam President, we've had an opportunity to review it. As the board is aware, you've rightly requested any contracts, addendums, or amendments come before the board at a public meeting so that it's a permanent part of your minutes, but we're recommending this particular contract extension.
Motion to approve, Madam President.
Yeah, it's a good project, I'll second it.
Motion to approve the Marquette Trail contract extension. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion has been passed. Next on the agenda, consider bid openings for Bridge 77 and 78. Mr. Sullivan?
Yes, we have, we have three bids that come in for Bridge 77, 8, 77 and 78 open Mill Creek. So we'll open those and see where we're at.
And by the indications, all are timely received, as I understand it. The first...
What's that?
First is from LaPorte Construction on, again, Bridge 77 and 78 reconstruction.
Oh, I know. I'm going to be bad about baseball. You're going to have white boogers.
Hit your mute button. Excuse me.
So the public knows, we did bid the bridges together, but they will not be built together because there is a home, they're only about a mile apart, so we're going to have to build them separately.
The first proposal is on Bridge 78, $268,075. The second proposal is on number 77, $289,287. RBO and other documents there as well. I think Reeve Riley has submitted, I think, separate packages on each bridge.
While you're opening those, I just want to mention to those who are on Zoom, if you're going to be presenting or making comments, if you could make sure that the public knows who you are and what department you're with, that way there won't be any confusion, because we can see you, but members of the public who are watching on Facebook Live are not able to see you perhaps, so please announce who you are and what department you are with. Thank you.
Yes, Reeve Riley on Bridge 78, bid of $306,984. Reeve Riley on Bridge 78, $324,399. And again, I should note, on these particular bridges, I think it's lowest and best, isn't it? We want to clarify for the record, because you had indicated something to me, that with the factors, it isn't simply lowest.
It's not going to be simply the lowest bid, that's correct. There's some factors involved there. We wanted everyone to include their line item costs.
Okay. Larson Danielson has also submitted on 77 and 78. Again, these are all timely received. They're listing a total on 78 of $177,684.83. On Bridge 77, a proposal of $193,781.62. I believe the, next is their, I think the others included their responsible bidder ordinance responses in the packet. Larson Danielson, I believe, submitted it separately. And so the RBO response to the proposal is in this separate envelope, and I believe I saw RBO responses by the other bidders are contained in those envelopes. Madam President, members of the Commission, we'd ask you to receive the bids and to have them referred to the department head for a recommendation ultimately to the board.
I make a motion to that effect.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion has been approved. Thank you so much, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
I am Dave Sullivan, the LaPorte County Engineers. Apologize for that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, consider the Third Amendment to Agreement for the Inmate Phone System.
Currently, we have an agreement with Securus Technology for the inmate phone system, which is our video visitation, and our kiosk system as well. We would like to amend the agreement that would run through the end of my term, which would be December 31, 2022. This would also allow us to have the inmates have access to the law library, and it will also raise the commission rate that we're receiving, which is well within the FCC guidelines.
So you're fully supportive?
Yes, we are.
Madam President, members of the Commission, our office has had an opportunity to review the proposed amendment. We've had discussions with the sheriff, the jail commander, and are comfortable with the terms and would recommend approval.
Madam President, I make a motion to approve this amendment.
Second motion.
We have a motion and a second on the floor to consider the Third Amendment to the Agreement for the Inmate Phone Systems. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion has been passed on this amendment. Thank you so much, Sheriff Boyd.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, consider transfer of tax sales certificate to LaPorte County Library for property on East West Street in Hannah, Indiana.
Yes, Madam President, members of the Commission, as the Commission has been very gracious in offering various tax sales certificates to other governmental entities that request, it's part of kind of the inter-agency or intergovernmental cooperation that I think this commission is very much committed to. There was a request from Mr. Kyle of the Library Board for transfer of this particular property on East West Street in Hannah, which joins the Hannah Library branch, and so we're recommending approval of it.
Do I have a motion to consider the transfer of tax sales?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second for the transfer of the tax sales certificate for property in Hannah, Indiana. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion has been passed. Thank you. Moving on, consider resolution proclaiming World Creativity and Innovation Week, April 15 through the 21st. We've been asked to support a proclamation for World Creativity and Innovation Week. Does anyone want to read that, or should I just summarize?
I'd be happy to read it.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Madam President, I think, before I read this, I was just thinking, looking at the agenda, that as we're going through this crisis, we really need innovation. We need innovation to create new medications, innovation to do tests that, with a quick turnaround time, innovation for vaccines. I think innovation is the name of the game, so this could not have come at a better time. So with that, Madam President, I read this proclamation. Whereas the week of April 15 to 21st is recognized by the County of LaPorte, State of Indiana, and more than 104 communities and 50 countries around the globe as the World Creativity and Innovation Week. And whereas the United Nations has designated April 21, 2020, as the World Creativity and Innovation Day. And whereas the theme of the World Creativity and Innovation Week in LaPorte County, State of Indiana in 2020 is everyday creativity, whereas World Creativity and Innovation Week is a celebration and recognition of our ability to generate new and useful ideas, use our imagination, and make new decisions so our communities, nation, and the world may thrive. And whereas World Creativity and Innovation Week is also designated to make every citizen aware that our society, our nation, and our economic viability depend on our individual and collective creativity. And whereas during World Creativity and Innovation Week, LaPorte County citizens are encouraged to recognize and apply their own creativity in their homes, schools, workplaces, organizations, government, and communities. Now therefore, Commissioner Mathias, Commissioner Cora, Commissioner Morzinski do declare April 15 to 21, 2020, as the World Creativity and Innovation Week. In the County of LaPorte, State of Indiana, we encourage all LaPorte County citizens to embrace their own creative spirit and to enjoy and express it in their homes, schools, workplaces, organizations, government, and community.
Thank you very much. All those in favor of supporting this, or would you have comments, Mr. Morzinski?
No, I'm fully supportive of it.
I think you made a really good point, Commissioner Cora, in talking about the importance of innovation, and certainly, you know, the three of us have spent long hours over the last couple of weeks with some of the members of the audience, some of the people who are on Zoom, and some people who are still at their desk or at their station, working to, and our response as a community to the coronavirus and the crisis at hand. And I think that if any, time is a time for not only examples of innovation, but examples about how decision-making needs to be innovative when things are moving so quickly. I think that this couldn't come at a more appropriate time.
And before we vote, Madam President, I also want to congratulate you for your creativity and innovation in bringing Zoom and separating all these seats by six feet, so that we can conduct the business of the county and still keep ourselves safe.
So I appreciate you saying that. I had to pull a few of you kicking and screaming into modern technology, not mentioning any names, but, you know, I think what this shows is that technology used well is certainly a good thing. And, you know, I'm looking, right now, we have 38 people watching us and making comments on Facebook Live. At one point, there were 53 people, so that was 53 members of the community who wanted to be here tonight, or wanted to participate, or at least to listen. So I think that that's a way that we can advance public involvement in our... So I think that that's a way that we can advance public involvement in our process. And it's important for people to know that as decision-makers, we are trying to be innovative and we are trying to be responsive. So we have a motion on the floor.
Madam President, we do want to recognize particularly to the assistance of ALCO for being here tonight, because I know how much the Commission appreciates that. There were some tough decisions to be made by the ALCO Board about what meetings they could or could not cover. And so I know that complements and supplements what you're doing online, but I know the Commission feels strongly about that as well.
Well, thank you. Thank you for mentioning that, because ALCO has been a staple in our community. And when you look at their viewership, you know, many of us must not have a life, because a lot of us watch ALCO for, you know, for entertainment. And certainly, while everyone's home and hunkering down, ALCO will continue to be our good neighbor and make sure that we're well informed. So thank you for mentioning that. All those in favor of the support, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Madam President, in the spirit of innovation and creativity, we'll be bringing in front of you the resolution for a mail-in voting shortly. We can continue to adapt ourselves to the changing times here.
Thank you. I'm glad you brought that up. Let's move on to the considering proposed list of Election Day voting sites. Kathy Crowback, Clerk of the Courts.
Good evening.
Good evening.
What a time, huh?
What a time.
I, just a little history. Diane and I went out, Diane, I picked Diane because she worked in voter's registration for a number of years and was very familiar with the polling locations. So we did a road trip, about four hours, four and a half hours. I sent you an email based on what we found back, I think it was the 19th of February. I did not hear anything. I presented to her for the agenda, the proposed polling places. I don't know what's gonna happen at this point, because the Secretary of State, the Governor, and both party chairs are working to try and figure out what they're gonna do. My gut tells me we're gonna do paper. But at this point, we're moving forward because we can't wait. We are in the process of sending letters to the poll workers now, or getting ready to. I know on the Democrat's side, they, the poll workers are already picked, and they already know where they're working. Haven't gotten the list from the Republicans yet. But so we need to make a decision, and the Board needs to, the Election Board needs to approve this, so.
Madam President, I make a motion to adopt this list of polling places. And I want to thank you for trying to work with us and the community in trying to pick up polling places that are acceptable to the community. And in the months to come, maybe we'll try to, I know you have minimized the number of school buildings here at the request of a school separate in Barbies and Watkins, and we'll continue to work on that hopefully.
Yeah, we're having a real problem with Niemann.
Right.
We can't find any.
Anything suitable. But at least I appreciate you trying, giving us a try. Thank you.
Second to motion.
We have a motion on the floor to support the proposed list of Election Day voting sites. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will keep you posted. We're supposed to know by Friday.
Yeah, there's a lot of, a lot of moving parts, and I appreciate you being flexible.
Yeah, and I mean, the clerks have been talking all day through email, and everybody has issues. So I'm sure she's taken all that into consideration.
So we're gonna hopefully adopt this resolution, and we'll pass it on to the Governor to consider a mail-in ballot. So yes, let's see what happens.
Yeah, I did a little research. Back in '08, we had 31,059 absentee ballots in the primary, or actually in the general, 3,000 in the primary. And then in '16, we had 29,117 in the general, 3264 in the primary mail-in ballots. So, and then in '18, which was more than we had anticipated, we had not anticipated the turnout, it was 1843 primary, 12, 295 in the general.
In general.
So.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Moving on to the additions to the agenda, consider supplement to Economic Development Corridor. Mitch Bishop, County Planner. Mitch, if you're on, you still there?
Yeah.
There you are.
Okay, good. Yeah, basically, this is supplement number one. The individual working on the project, engineering firms locked into the group, and this would cover a PR piece for the Economic Development Corridor, which includes website, which was recently developed, and also out of the committee groups that have met, I think, around two months ago or three months ago, last one. One of the suggestions was that we look at two additional possible routes, south corridors from State Road 2 to 35. So bringing that total to four, there was only, we were originally only looking at two, but that would, that would bring it to four. And the supplement would cover, actually, the total is $57,400. Eighty percent of that are $45,920 I received. And the City of La Porte and the County would be responsible for the additional 20%, which is 11,480. And of that, we're hoping we split that with the City of La Porte. So it'd be $5,740 between the both of us. And that's something that Nick Minnick, the county, the city engineer, already agreed to, and the city is for. So any questions you might have?
Yeah. Hi, Mr. Bishop. I wanted to ask you, this grant, I think this money was coming through a grant, was it through the highway funds?
No, yeah, this is money through, originally received through NDOT.
NDOT.
The County received the grant through NDOT, I would say, three years ago.
Okay, yeah.
The original amount, the original amount was quite a bunch, I bet. It was, the original contract was $457,000. That's to do the NEPA document. And actually, when we completed, you get something called a finding, a finding of no significant impact. That's what we're after. This would add additional $57,400. But again, the 80% of that is covered through a grant. However, the timeframe, we have to get this signed quick because the money is fiscal year 2020. And that means the money has to be obligated, the federal money has to be obligated, no later than May 1st through NDOT. So this has to be signed and delivered to them soon in order for the project to continue.
Thank you. Any questions?
Madam President, I make a motion to go ahead and adopt this supplement to the Economic Development Corridor and allow Mr. Bishop to go in front of the council.
Second to motion.
We have a motion and support to consider the supplement to the Economic Development Corridor and allowing the Planner to go to the County Council. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion has been passed. Thank you, Mr. Bishop.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we want to, speaking of innovation, we want to consider La Porte County COVID-19 Employee and Operations Policy. So we've just been speaking a little bit about innovation and how some of us, a lot of us, are working really strange hours, long hours, to try to meet the ever-changing environment around us. And we know that many of our county services are health and human services, they, they're in relation to our citizens' safety.
I don't.
Okay, please mute. Excuse me. And that the most valuable people who are performing those services need to be protected, need to be cared for. Many of them have families that they're concerned about. And so we've tried to reflect some of the, you know, we're, everything is changing quickly, but we want to try to address some of the needs and some of the concerns of our valued employees. So perhaps Shaw, you, or no, Barb, sorry, I forgot you were on the phone. Barb is here to present to us the highlights of a policy that will provide some adjustments to our normal HR policy in regards to leave, to sick time, and to making sure that our employees stay safe. So Barb?
Hi, good evening. Barb Mossman, Human Resources Director. We have managed to put together with the assistance of Shaw, Joey Whiskey, and the Commissioners, a policy that I think is going to be beneficial for our employees right now during this timeframe. The policy is fairly lengthy, so I will go ahead and modify that down just a bit for you. But in essence, we are looking at extending 10 paid leave days to our employees that meet certain criteria. And basically, those would be employees who have a current diagnosis, could possibly be under a quarantine, or employees who do not have a current diagnosis but who develop signs of the COVID-19. Those individuals will be awarded the 10-day, 10 paid public health leave days, paid at 100%. If after this timeframe, if they still are experiencing the same situation, we will then grant 75% of their regular wages to be paid and give the employee an option to supplement that income with their accrued paid leave time. Any employee that is currently living in a household or caring for someone, who meets the exceptions that I had just mentioned, or an employee who is at increased risk because of a diagnosed health condition, or employees who have a child at home because of closure that is responsible for the care of that child, the County will then extend 75% of that employee's paid leave time during this timeframe. That employee also has the option then of also utilizing accrued paid leave time to get to 100% of their paid leave. We're also looking at addressing our employees that are new to county employment, that are still within their first year of employment, the county, these employees who meet the exceptions noted above, will have five paid days to use during this timeframe, and then will be able to supplement the rest of their pay after that time period at 75%. One thing I do really want to note with this policy, right now, the County is stating that it is reserving the right to decline this compensation to those receiving assistance provided under the Family First Corona Response Act. So when that does come down the road, this policy language may change, and the County may need to adjust the language at that time. Also, any county employees who do participate in this policy are, will be prohibited from participating in any outside employment during this timeframe. Once we do have any employees who identify under this policy that they would like to participate, we are going to ask them to sign a public health leave form attesting that they are experiencing one of these issues. And if we do find out that any employee has falsified information to us with regards to this policy, that employee will be subject to disciplinary action up to and including So that's it in a nutshell.
That's a big nutshell. Great job, Barb. A great summary.
So Madam President, let me just summarize. I think we got together and came up with this policy to make sure that our staff who are sick can take some time off and not worry about not getting paid, because it's good for them, and it's also good for the other employees, because if they're sick and if they come to work, it'll put everybody else at risk. So I think this is a well-thought-out policy, and it'll help address our current situation. And I want to thank Barb for working on this one and Shaw for working that way. We have a policy in place that will protect the employees, protect their families, and protect the other employees of the County. That way, we are all safe.
Thank you. Mr. Marzinski?
I agree.
So while it is our policy that people who are sick should not come to work, we know that when your sick time is limited, you tend to make decisions based on making sure you have food on the table. So this is our way of trying to support people in making the decision that's best for their health and for their family's health, and for the rest of our employees, so we all stay well. So at this time, are there any comments from the public, or comments, questions from any of the Department Heads? Will, Barb will be on deck, I'm sure, tomorrow to answer lots of questions on this, because I'm sure people will have questions. So at this time, I'd entertain a motion to adopt.
Madam President, we also have a section for modification to normal operations. Should we cover that and vote on it together?
Sure. Yes, please.
Yeah. Barb, you want to, you want to address the modifications to normal operations?
I'm sorry, Dr. Cora, modifications to what part?
The second, the second part, the modi, you know, you covered the leave, the public health leave aspect. What about the modifications to normal operations?
Sure. Then I'll just go ahead and read this. While the primary goal is to keep operating as normal as possible for as long as possible, there may be situations in which modification to department operations or services offering must take place. Departments should immediately enact social distancing practices, which is the separation of six feet, which you all are doing right now. Thank you. This also may lead to limits on public interactions with your departments, so please balance these considerations with the goal of ensuring continuity of operations. Any employee at increased risk for the coronavirus, I'm sorry, the COVID-19 due to a diagnosed health condition whose job function does have them require close contact, but who are otherwise able and healthy, may request a temporary modification in their job to help coordinate with their supervisor at that time. This may include a temporary change in job location for frontline staff, modification of work assignment or duties, or implementation of additional protective measures to reduce those exposures to others or chances of being affected. So if job modifications are not possible, the employee then will meet, mark the exception number five that is listed on the first page of that, of this document.
Thank you. Madam President, I just want to make a couple of comments. You know, a lot of times people ask, you know, there are some people who ask, why does the county government close, for example? And then if we were to close, then some people will complain, why did you close? So there is no good or easy way of handling it. I think our approach in this whole situation has been to take a balanced and prudent approach, wherein the functions of the, essential functions of the county government will continue, and we are going to take adequate precautions. I think we did give the departments and heads the ability to allow, if possible, the staff to work from home wherever it is feasible, and then rotate people. That way, they are not all cramped in one room, and some of them can work from home, some of them can work on-site. And I think it's working. And we also limited the foot traffic in the buildings. That way, the employer, our staff who comes to work here are not exposed to unnecessary risk. But at the same time, they are coming to work, and through telephone and email, the essential functions of the county government is going on. And I also feel personally, as a physician, it is important as much as we are dealing with this crisis, to also create a sense of normalcy as much as we possibly can. And I think if we keep functioning by taking these precautions, I think it will create that kind of an environment. That's my personal view.
Thank you so much. Mr. Marzinski, any comments?
We've said all along in our meeting that our employees are the greatest asset. We need to take care of them.
Right.
Got a lot of good, dedicated people here, and we need to do what's best for them and for the County. I think we really nailed it with this.
Thank you. Thank you to both of my colleagues for speaking on this. And I think, you know, we talk about innovation, but we also want to talk about the fact that our employees do great work all year round. And under stress, and the stress that all of us as citizens in America have been under, they have really stepped up. Our Department Heads are working with their team to be as creative and innovative as we can, to make sure that people who have small children at home have the care, those children have the care that they need. And so this is an example of us trying to be creative, be innovative, be good thinkers, and also be wise with our community's tax dollars and assets. But there are some functions in government that you may not even know exist until push comes to shove and there is an emergency. And there are people who are dedicated professionals who do this all year round. They're there when you're sleeping, those folks are there doing their work and making sure that you're, that you're safe in your, in your home, in your neighborhood, in your community. And now more than ever, we need them to be healthy, we need them to be able to come to work knowing that their child has, has appropriate childcare, that their mother, who may have some symptoms, has someone to take care of them. And so this is a And so this is, this is our way of trying to make sure that we're being flexible and making sure that we're addressing the crisis at hand. So with that-
Madam President, I want to echo your sentiments, and I want to express my gratitude to all the staff who have been coming to work and taking care of the essential functions of county government. And with that, I make a motion to adopt this new policy.
I will second the motion.
So we have a motion and a second on the floor to adopt the LaPorte County COVID-19 Employee and Operations Policy, which makes some adjustments to our normal employee handbook and workplace policies. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The policy has been adopted. We may end up, Barb, I'm sure there may be some adjustments as the days and weeks and months flow, so feel free to come back when, if there are things that need to be amended or adjusted.
Okay. Thank you very much, and thank you to all the commissioners for your support in putting this policy together and getting that put in place for our employees.
Thank you.
Thank you for your leadership, Barb.
Thank you.
So moving on, next on the agenda, we consider a resolution requesting the Governor of Indiana to provide immediate relief to local government to permit us to best serve our constituents during the COVID-19 crisis. And I think I may ask that we, that we read this into the record. Would you like me to read it, or would you like to read it, Dr. Cora?
I'll be happy. Since you've been doing so much talking, I want you to give some rest.
Thank you, sir.
I'll be happy to read it. All right. Whereas on March 6, 2020, the Governor of Indiana declared a public health emergency for the coronavirus disease outbreak, COVID-19. Whereas on March 13, 2020, the President declared a national emergency for the same. Whereas pursuant to IC 10-14-3-1291, the Governor has authority to suspend the provisions of any regulatory statute prescribing the procedures for, for the conduct of state business, or the orders, rules, or regulations of any state agency, if strict compliance with any of these provisions would in any way prevent, hinder, or delay necessary action in coping with the emergency. Whereas the Governor's Executive Order 20-4 issued on March 16, 2020, meant the immediate closure of bars, restaurants, and other hospitality and entertainment venues throughout the state of Indiana, thereby idling hundreds of thousands of Hoosiers, with hundreds already affected in LaPorte County, and with a number of unemployed expected to climb into the thousands by this weekend. And whereas LaPorte County's judges have already acted to mitigate the effects of such layoffs by suspending any eviction hearings or debt collection proceedings, whereas food banks and food pantries are already being overrun with new demand, whereas the undersigned are concerned about food stocks and medicines being timely delivered to the elderly and sherrons, and whereas state leaders have preserved a $2 billion surplus for a rainy day fund when Hoosiers would most need help and assistance in coping with an emergency. Now therefore be resolved by the LaPorte County Board of Commissioners that we call on the Governor, Governor to exercise the authority granted him under Indiana law to do the following. Immediately convene an emergency meeting of the State Budget Committee to authorize a $500 million stimulus package for the state, and be directed to cash-strapped cities, towns, and counties throughout Indiana to assist with emergency needs, whether they are supplies, personnel, or direct assistance to local nonprofits, including churches, Meals on Wheels, community mental health centers, or other entities called on to assist during the emergency. Immediately directed, direct the Department of Local Government Finance and State Board of Accounts to loosen regulations for local entities spending on emergency matters, allowing such entities to tap surpluses that may exist in a given account or fund to pay for emergency assistance, including personnel, equipment, or supplies. Provide an immediate cash infusion to Indiana workforce development to staff up intake workers for unemployment compensation claims and loosen regulations regarding waiting times for benefits and assistance, all of which is resolved on this 18th day of March 2020. Madam President, I present this for your consideration and adoption.
Thank you. Commissioner Marzinski?
Yeah, these are some strange times. And, you know, I, when the governor shut down the bars and restaurants, I think about the people that own these establishments. You know, yesterday was St. Patrick's Day. What do you guys do with, with tons of corned beef and cabbage? Restaurants that we all frequent. Not only is the establishment itself in jeopardy with their inventory and the lack of business, but I think about the waiters, the waitresses, the dishwashers, the cooks, all these people. They don't make a lot of money. And I think it's incumbent on us as leaders of the county to try to do what we can to help out there. I really feel for a lot of these people, that they're struggling as it is. And now with this, to just cut them off with no warning, it's unprecedented. So I wholeheartedly support this request.
Thank you. I think unprecedented is the right word for this. Most of us in our lifetime have never seen anything quite as severe and as frightening, and many people-
And sudden.
Sudden, frightening, and, and really historic. When you think that there are $2 billion in a surplus in the state for a rainy day fund, and while it may not be raining, we've got, we've got a virus that has affected every single family in our county. You know, Commissioner talked about the owners of the bars and the, and the workers. Some of those folks are already marginalized. They're living, you know, tips to, tip to paycheck to support their families, to put food on the table, to feed our young, our young children who are our future. And so at this time, more than any, and then in my memory, and I'm sure in my colleague's memory, there has never been a time where that rainy day fund was more needed by Hoosiers across our county and across our state than now. And I think we're sending a strong message of support to our, to our citizens who, who look to us for leadership, but also to our, to our governor, that this is a message that he can take and hear loud and clear from the county of LaPorte. So with that, we have a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor of supporting the resolution from the LaPorte County Board of Commissioners to the Governor of the state, providing, asking for immediate relief to local government to permit us to best serve our constituents during the COVID-19 emergency. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion has passed, and we'll get this to the Governor and put on his desk immediately. Thank you. Last on the agenda for our regular business, before we begin to discuss some of our other matters, consider a resolution urging the Indiana Election Commission to authorize no excuse mail-in voting for the 2020 elections.
Madam, if I may, I'll just read it-
Yes, sir.
-that way everybody can hear what this is. Whereas the leaders of both the Republican and Democratic state parties have joined in a letter sent this past Friday to the Indiana Election Commission urging any registered voter in Indiana to vote absentee by mail. And whereas Indiana voters can only vote absentee by mail if they have a disability, are 65 years old or older, are a member of the military or public safety official, have to work the polls on election day, may be out of town on election day, or cite unavailability of transportation, or are confined to home due to illness or injury. And whereas the leaders of both state political parties believe that for the health and safety reasons during the coronavirus outbreak, that voters should simply be able to vote by mail without citing a particular reason. And whereas both party leaders also agree that the deadline for mail-in voting should be closer to the election than the current 12 days before. And whereas any prospect, we can mitigate the risk of exposure of citizens to this virus and allow the social distancing called for by the CDC. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of LaPorte County, that we urge the Indiana Election Division to hold a special meeting to authorize the changes called for by both political parties to permit no excuse mail-in voting for Indiana voters, and to have such changes adopted as soon as possible to alert all voters in the state of the opportunity to cast a mail-in vote without having, having a reasoned excuse. All of which is resolved this 18th day of March 2020 by the Board of County Commissioners of LaPorte County, Indiana.
Thank you, Commissioner Cora. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on this at this time?
Actually, I'd like to hear any comments from our county clerk, Ms. Crowback.
We've actually been talking about this, so it's going to be difficult, even as our primary is in May, to get workers, most of them seniors, to work polling places. I mean, I think it's a good-
My only question is, from the operational standpoint of printing ballots and mailing them out, I don't think that would be that big of a deal.
No, we've already been in communication with folks that print our ballots and trying to get a handle on possibly how many we might need.
Okay.
Other clerks have done the same thing. My only concern is counting all of them. And we have to have a Democrat and Republican for each section. So if you have 40 people, you have to have 20 and 20. And they are in close quarters, because we are reading the ballots. Hopefully by May, it won't be so dire. But I think we all realize that this might be what we'll have to do, because we're going to have a problem staffing the polling place, I'm afraid.
Madam President, I also feel that by, by sending this resolution and urging, urging the state officials to take this action, we can prevent chaos and confusion on election day or close to the election, and that way we can properly plan and make this whole process go very smoothly, and also give opportunity for everyone to be, to be able to have their voice heard.
Yeah. My other concern is the polls, actually, the people that are housing our polling places backing out. Churches-
Sure.
Fire stations, whatever, so. I mean, it's changing every day.
Right.
Thank you for your input.
Thank you so much. Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak? Before we consider a motion, I guess I feel it's important to share my personal experience with vote by mail. So I lived in the state of Washington for seven years, and in the state of Washington, there are no polling places. Everyone votes by mail. So about two weeks before the election, you get every registered voter, regardless of whether you are independent, Democrat or Republican, you get a ballot in the mail. It sits on your kitchen table until you decide to get it done. There is a deadline, so you have to have it in the mail by midnight on a particular day. But the state of Washington has a really high voter turnout because of that. You really don't have any excuse, and you don't have to remember that, oh my gosh, that day is my doctor's appointment, I've got to, I've got to file a document to say that I need an absentee ballot. Every registered voter gets their ballot by mail. You have about 10 days to, to get it back in the mail, and there is very little voter fraud. There's not, that's not a continued issue. And so I think that some of the issues that Clerk Crowback talked about are really not just COVID virus-related, they are, you know, a continual, you know, making sure you have the right space, making sure you have people who can come in. And the virus only has exacerbated the issue, and perhaps it is time to look at what other states have done as a regular order of business. And again, you know, sometimes there are silver linings and things, and sometimes crises bring our best thinking to the, to the front, and perhaps this is that time. So I think this is a great idea. I, I watched it work, and it works really well in the states that have adopted vote by mail. Any other comments from the commissioners? I'd consider a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to approve a resolution to urging this Indiana Election Commission to authorize no excuse mail-in voting for the 2020 elections. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. It has been passed, and we'll send that on to them. All right. At this time, we want to open a section of the agenda in regards to our response, our community response, responses of some of our emergency and first responders to the COVID-19 virus/crisis. So I see some of you are in the room, and I hope that you, I know members of the public that are listening. Right now, we have people on Facebook Live, we have our Zoom, and then we have Alco listeners. So I see EMS is here, and 911 Dispatch. Would some of you like to come up and speak at this time? Age before beauty, I heard that.
Hello, I'm Alter. Good evening. Steve Alt, Director of 911. We, I have been working very hard since last week, making sure, actually, this is, if we can look at a silver lining on a very serious situation. I have ensured all our backup sites are functioning, as a matter of fact, and this is no fault of anyone else's, but we discovered today that our, one of our backup sites in Michigan City had never been powered on in the last couple of years, three years. So we were able to do updates to the computer. Porter County and I am met, and we have equipment over there that's ready to go. We have, they have, their equipment's over with us. We are fully functional, either both dispatch centers in the event, in the scenario that we were, although this scenario, we could do it any other, any emergency, but in the scenario we talked about was if we did have to do a bailout of the dispatch center in the event, the dispatch center is infected and needs to be cleaned. And we can do a 24-hour period that we can be away, and Porter County would take over our dispatch. And at the same time, we test, I tested backups at both the Sheriff's Department, Post Command, LaPorte City, EMA, Long Beach, all of those have fully functional consoles that we can send a dispatcher to, as well as two that would go over to Porter County for 911 services. That's the only thing we have to transfer to Porter County or St. Joe County. Michigan City is a standalone center. Basically, they could be, they could be fully functional, although they only have one console. They have their own, are their own 800 megahertz towers. So we know that we can go over to Michigan, in the event we have to do something, we can go over to Michigan City if power was out, we're fully functional at Michigan City. I had the help of all these agencies. I had controlled access to the room, and every agency that, in public safety, has been very receptive to this. And I'd like to, and the Sheriff's Department, the Warrant Division, I want to publicly thank them, because we came up with a procedure for them as well, and things have been really working well in that area. EMS has been obviously taken the lead on this, and we have been working with EMS on these, on protocols to protect public, all the public safety. And ironically, some of those protocols have gotten out to other agencies and are using our protocol, so that's pretty nice, you know? But again, I want to give EMS a shout out for helping us. And with that, I do have a statement I want to read at the end that I put out today on our webpage and Facebook page for the public. We were, I belong to a network of EM, or I'm sorry, 911 directors, and we've been reaching out, and I do, Larry's probably still listening, I hope.
He is.
And our EMA has been phenomenal compared to other people's EMA that I've, and this, we're talking southern part of the state. So he has taken the lead, and I've, I've just been picking, backing off of his leadership. So EMA has really helped a lot with some of these protocols that we've had, and that's also, I, I think I emailed all you guys our backout procedures if there is an emergency, and that also came from that network. And I thought it was great, and with their help and EMA's help, things have been getting accomplished. The last thing I'd like to read is this, what I have posted today. As of Friday, March 13, 2020, anyone that calls the 911 Center, E911 Center with a medical complaint of difficulty breathing, chest pain, headache, or general sickness will be screened for COVID-19. These screening questions that we give are a CDC questions that were posted, so all the nation is using these screening questions. I wanted to add that. With a series of screening questions, these questions are designed to give first responders advanced notice if a patient has COVID-19 symptoms. A common misconception by many of our callers is that our question, our questions delay the dispatching of fire and EMS. This series of questions will not delay help. It will, however, make sure the appropriate resources are dispatched with the ability to wear the appropriate personal protective equipment. This will actually save time when matters the most. Your dispatch has been working on COVID-19 questions for the last couple of weeks in preparation that we get to this point. They have had new protocols available for training in the moment it was decided. At this, as this situation develops, rest assured, your 911 dispatchers are diligent and prepared for this endeavor. Again, we, I want the public to know that even though we're asking them questions while they're, they're asking for assistance, we have help on the way. That's it.
Thank you.
Steve, I guess before you leave, I want you to bring the message back from the commissioners to your team, that now more than ever, we rely- from the commissioners to your team that now more than ever, we rely on them. And I mentioned before, when people are sleeping, they don't realize your team is at their desk. They're tending to those emergency calls that happen every hour of the day and night, 24/7. You've been really a creative leader. And I know with Wendy and your team, your supervisors and your staff, you all have had to step forward, be innovative. I know you're locked in that space and keeping it clean, keeping people motivated. It requires some special skills. So I just want to make sure that you realize that we appreciate you as a leader. We appreciate Larry and the EMA team, the EMS team represented in the back with Eric and Andrew. You know, the county can't function, and people may not realize all the little pieces that we all do. But together, you all have woven together a beautiful quilt of services. And I'm really very impressed, and I'm sure I'm speaking for my colleagues here, that we thank you and all of the rapid responders, first responders, law enforcement that are out there across this large geographic area, making sure that our families, our children, our elders are protected and kept safe. So thank you so much. And thank you Sheriff Boyd and your team. You know, it's pretty amazing to me. I've been around government for a long time. But at a time of crisis, it just brings the best out in our dedicated employees. So I wanted to say thank you to you, representing all the other first responders, rapid responders, safety personnel that are across our county. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Eric with LaPorte County EMS. I'm going to build a little bit on what Steve had to say. It's really been a group effort from 911. It all starts there. We can't go where we're supposed to go if they don't send us. And with them starting their pre-screening, that really gets us in the right mind frame and knowing what we're going into and able to protect ourselves so we can protect everyone else. With Larry Levandowski's team helping us get the right stuff to disinfect our ambulances. Larry with EMA, getting us equipment. Just some notes on where we are equipment-wise. We're stocked up for several months, but we still need help. I know Larry Butcher's working on that quite extensively through the state. They said it's coming. They have it. We just don't have it yet. But we are set pretty well as far as supplies go for the next several months. In addition to that, we've also worked with all the fire departments who we sponsor for the first responder programs to get them the equipment that we have so that they can be safe on helping us out. We did a Train the Trainer program on using that equipment. Our education coordinator, Terry Youngman, did that so they can take that back to their departments and keep all their guys safe. We've laid that out to all of our employees so that these guys going out on the calls can keep themselves safe and not get exposed. Obviously, if our guys get exposed, we're in a lot of trouble. So we want to make sure we have the right stuff to keep them safe. We've got protocols that outline exactly what to do, how to do it, when to do it. And like Steve said, that's kind of carried on to some other agencies around us. So it's pretty neat that we were a step ahead. We've been working on this for probably the better part of seven to eight weeks. So we were pretty instrumental in getting on it right away so that when the time came, we were ready to go with it. All the hospitals around us, our three main receiving facilities, our Porter, Michigan City, and LaPorte. We've worked with all of them so that we know exactly what to do to take a patient there, what their procedures are, what they expect, where they want us to go. We've also, like I said, with the help of Larry Levandowski and his team getting the right disinfectants, we've laid out a procedure for deconting our ambulances and all our equipment to make sure that we're not picking something up off of any of that. We have halted our classes. We were in the middle of a first responder class that we have stopped just to limit people coming into the building, their ride time with our service. We do have a lot of students that ride from other schools and programs. We've stopped that just to limit the amount of stuff coming in. Andrew wanted to pass along his thanks to our education coordinator, Terry Youngman, and our equipment coordinator, Captain Jeff Kuhn, for all of their hard work here the last few weeks and all of our crews for their diligence and doing the training and taking this very seriously so that we can keep ourselves safe and still serve the public.
No, thank you for all you're doing. But make sure that you use their personal protection. It's very, very important to keep you safe and healthy because so many people depend on you. And if you have any problem getting it, talk to Larry Butcher. He has a way of getting things. And yeah, so make sure that you reach out to him.
Will do.
Yeah, thank you.
So as I said to Steve, and I said to Larry Butcher and to Sheriff, please make sure that your team realizes how much this community values them and appreciates them. You know, as leaders, and I speak to the sheriff as well and to Larry Butcher and any Larry Levandowski, those of you who lead teams, now more than ever, they're looking to you for leadership. They're looking to you. One of the ways we show the value to people is by that leadership. So continue the good work, and thank you so much for all your efforts. Really appreciate that. Sheriff.
I'm superstitious, so I'm going to knock on wood. So far, so good. We've been busy, but our calls for service have dropped a little bit. We are concerned. We had a countywide meeting with department heads last week, and I had mentioned that we're concerned about our inmate population. We're monitoring that very closely. And we do have new screening sheets that we're using for each RSD that comes in. We're trying to curtail their movement as much as we can. The judges have been great to work with, the prosecuting attorney's office as far as inmate movement in and out of the building. We've done some things like our community work program that we've suspended until further notice so we don't move inmates in and out of the facility where they may contract it, then bring it back in. We've been looking at some of the best practices throughout the state. We've been in touch with the National Sheriffs Association, certainly the Indiana Sheriffs Association, the Centers for Disease Control, and the Department of Justice. We've looked at some of the best practices throughout the state of Indiana, through the Midwest and the country as well. One of the areas that we're having some issues with is getting hand sanitizer. While our jail employees and our employees that work here physically within the building, we can simply go to the sink sometimes and wash our hands. But our patrol deputies, it's not quite that easy. Or if we have deputies that have to move an inmate out for medical service or something like that, they need hand sanitizer because they don't have access to the sinks that the rest of us would have. So we've been doing a search, and we know that there's a backlog. I've also had several of the chiefs of police departments throughout the county reach out to us to see if we had access to it. And if we did, we'd provide to them. But if we can get help from any of you in speeding up that process and getting this hand sanitizer for those out in the field, we'd appreciate it. With our schools having closed down, we reassigned our four school resource officers to help us, to have gone back to patrol. One went into investigations to help because they're short, and one went into our Warrants Division and is helping there as well. But we continue to monitor the health and the welfare of our employees. The problem with those in emergency services, they often put on a brave face. And while we tell them, if you're sick, stay away, many of them take pride in the fact that they don't call off sick, and they've never taken a sick day. But it's important that they monitor their own health and know their own limitations. And if they are sick, they simply need to stay away. I'm really proud to report that the only sickness, illness that we've had unfortunately was a jailed deputy that was assaulted by somebody. They had psychological issues in the jail just a little while ago, went to the hospital, and has gone home as a result of that. But nothing is a result of this virus. And again, I knock on wood. But we appreciate your support and continued communication. We also really appreciate the working relationship that we have with the Health Department. They've been great. They've secured a number of N95 masks for our staff. EMS is sending us best practices. 911 is always a great partner to work with. It's just a great team, and at times like this, we come together. And it really helps us when we work as a team.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Anyone on the line, Mr. Butcher, Mr. Levandowski, that would wish to kind of give us an update?
Yeah, I don't know. Is my mic muted? Can you guys hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. One of the things that I want to bridge as attention.
Just for the record, Larry, I just want to make sure the public knows who's speaking. This is Larry Butcher, our Director of the Emergency Management. Go ahead, Larry.
Sorry about that, boss. Just so the Sheriff's Department knows, Andrew and anybody that spends money, state did release a method of reimbursement. I did forward that to the commissioners and to Mr. Friedman, I do believe, to look over. I do believe that, you know, it's a simple process, almost like when we have a storm or something like that and it reimburses a myriad amounts of dollars or some type of dollars. Anything that has to do with COVID, especially the other lady, Mr. Levandowski, anything that you spend for sanitizing or anything like that, anybody that's off work, everything that is related to this COVID, please keep your receipts, keep the documentation so that in the event that when it comes time to turn in for reimbursement that my office doesn't struggle with documentation on getting us reimbursed. As far as equipment goes, I did go to the Gary Airport today and meet with the regional EMA directors and a representative from the State Bureau's Office. The national stockpile has been released. It should be in Indianapolis in just a couple of days. And I do believe that I am going to give some to the homeless shelters too that are having sick people. I was in communication with Chris Tate from United Way. She is going to start a fund that is going to help us to help fund some of those less fortunate people that may need masks and sanitizers. You know that, you know, anything that I get from the state is going to go to fire, police, EMS, and the Sheriff's Department. But I also have to look out for the homeless people that are suffering and that are having sicknesses within the shelters. And that's about all I have unless anyone has any questions for me.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Butcher? So Larry, again, Mr. Butcher, I want to be sure you realize how much we appreciate your leadership. And you've heard tonight how everyone is speaking about their part, but how important it is that we are working together as a team and that free and open communication and assistance and sharing best practices and being innovative. And you certainly have led the way on that, so thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Levandowski.
Yes. Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Larry Levandowski, Director of Facilities. As of right now, we're moving straightforward. We've met with all of our team, and we've teamed up the maintenance personnel along with the housekeepers. They're hitting the buildings constantly throughout the day. As our gentlemen are walking through, they're going to have bottles in their back pocket with QT Plus, which is a disinfectant that we can use on all the handrails, doors, doorknobs. So throughout the day, we're hitting every doorknob, every door throughout every building, every place that someone would actually put a hand. We're trying to make sure in the bathrooms and everywhere. After hours, we have an individual spraying and disinfecting every room, every hallway. So that way, in the mornings, everything's been disinfected for any employee walks through the door. Like I said, we're doing this throughout the days in all the buildings on top of keeping the rest of the maintenance up. As for our supplies, right now, we're set for at least a couple of months. We're on a waiting list for hand sanitizer. As soon as we do get some hand sanitizer, we will let everybody that's in need know. But we are on a waiting list, and it looks like the waiting list is about a month long as of right now. And we've called at least six vendors right now. I'd like to, like I said, I'd like to thank every one of the team members. Ken Shores is my assistant, has been at the front line for me for the last week and a half. Every individual has worked hard to make sure things are going smooth. I couldn't thank them all enough.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd also like to thank the EMS individuals, EMA, 911 for being patient, for letting us, giving us time to get the materials they need. You know, it's not like it takes time to get some stuff. And everybody's been patient and had a calm, cool head on everything.
Thanks so much. Are there any other department heads who want to weigh in on our response to the coronavirus?
Do you want to ask one more thing?
Certainly.
I'd like to thank Steve Alt. You know, I'm not an administrator to the county website, but Steve has been gracious enough to engage with things that are standing. I just wanted to shout out to Mr. Alt for helping me with that. To Andrew and Eric for bearing with me while I try and find supplies.
Thank you. You mentioned the web website, and I think this is a good time to talk about the importance that the county website has played in this situation. You know, God works in mysterious ways. Our new website came out at just the appropriate time. We are having 2,000 visitors a day on our website gathering information. So if there are department heads or agencies or other governmental units that have information, if you can send that to me or to Bailey McGrath, we're able to get that up on the web. And people are really using those resources to make sure that we're getting current. Bailey's done a remarkable job, and I want to thank her publicly, for moving on a dime. I mean, on Saturday, she was posting things for me. So, you know, we're really trying to use the website as a place where people can find the most up-to-date and current information, especially during times like this is when technology can be used to our benefit, and people are really responding well to that. So thanks so much for that. And if you have any updates, please make sure you get them to us, and we'll get that up quickly for you. Dr. Cora, do you have any Commissioner comments?
Usually, I'm brief, but tonight, I have a lot to say. So please bear with me. First of all, we have one confirmed case of COVID-19 in our county. We're praying for a speedy recovery for this individual and pray for support to his family. I've been in constant touch with our Health Department, Tony Mankuso and Jenny Smith and the team at the Health Department and Dr. Doozy. And they are also, they have been feeling a lot of calls from concerned citizens. A lot of calls that we get, whether it's at the Health Department and even at my office, pertains to testing. Because there's so much fear out there. People want to be tested if they have symptoms of sore throat or cough or fever. Unfortunately, we do not have enough test kits. So I reached out to both the hospitals. At the Franciscan Health Michigan City, they started testing today. They have a drive-in testing, but they have a limited number of tests. So they are prioritizing. And they want to make these tests available for individuals who are at high risk. And the high-risk individuals are older individuals with underlying medical problems and individuals from like nursing homes, healthcare, healthcare personnel who have been exposed. So they are prioritizing it to high-risk individuals. So if anybody wants to have a test done, you need to have an order from your doctor. And then with that order, you need to call 219-877-1474. And Bailey, you're going to put this on our website. I also reached out to LaPorte Hospital and spoke to Kelly Credit. And they have a hotline at LaPorte Hospital, which is 833-576-3627. And this morning, Madam President, I was at a blessing when the trailer opened in the parking lot of Franciscan Health Michigan City. Sister Petra did the blessing, and then the first car drove in, and the testing was done. So I want everyone who is listening to this to know that the turnaround time is about four to five days at this time. So it takes a while for the results to come back. And if anybody has symptoms that are suggestive of it, but if you have mild symptoms, it's best to just isolate yourself. If the symptoms get worse, please call your doctors. I think that's the important thing to do. And if somebody is sick, I cannot emphasize how important it is not to go to work. Please do not go to work if you're sick because you're hurting yourself and you're hurting other people. So it's best not to go to work. Now, as Now, as time goes on, as more tests become available, more test kits become available, I'm sure they'll be able to loosen these requirements, and they'll be able to test more people. But at this time, they are limiting it to those individuals who are at high risk. Also, I want to emphasize that one of the areas, when we met as a task force for the LaPorte County Coronavirus Task Force, one of the areas we were concerned quite a bit was nursing homes, assisted living facilities, because they are most at risk. If you look at the number of deaths that happened in the United States, it's over 100 as of this morning, and half of them have been in Washington State, unfortunately. And of those, almost half of them were from a single nursing home. So these are very high-risk individuals. So with the health of our Health Department and communication with the nursing homes and assisted living facilities, visitation has been limited. And Peggy Rose, who works with the Health Department, is taking an active interest in making sure that the nursing homes and assisted living facilities have the support they need, and she is constantly in touch with them. And even both the hospitals have also limited visitation because of the risks that are involved. I think that is as far as coronavirus is concerned. I also want to remind everyone that the food pantries, both in Michigan City and LaPorte, are short of supplies. And if anybody can make donations, if they're able to do it, I think this is a good time to do it. I think, from what I hear, cash donations are probably the best. One last thing, Madam President, is we had our Health Insurance Committee meeting this afternoon, and we looked at the numbers. So as far as the expenses for our county employees' health is concerned, we have spent $250,000 less than what we had budgeted for. So that's a positive thing. One of the things we also adopted as a policy is any costs that is involved in a COVID-19 testing for our county employees and who are covered by our insurance will be fully covered. There is no copay or anything for the COVID-19 testing. And in addition to that, what we have done is because individuals are fearful of going and sitting in a doctor's office, so what we are doing is, at least for the next three months, any telemedicine visits that are done with TeleDoc, that's the contracted entity we have with our insurance, any telemedicine visits that are done over the next three months, there will not be any copays for those visits irrespective whether it is for COVID-19 or not. So those are the three things that we adopted at our committee meeting today. That way, we can protect our staff and make sure that they are taken care of. So I just wanted to summarize those things.
Thank you. That's terrific. Appreciate that. You did have a lot to say.
Yes.
We're really blessed to have Dr. Cora as a Commissioner because not only is he a great Commissioner from a service perspective, but we get the added benefit of having a physician to advise us. And certainly, at this time, your advice is needed more than ever. So thank you so much. I really appreciate you talking about our employees not coming to work if they are ill. I've heard of a couple cases where people were so concerned about missing a day that they chose to come when they weren't well. And that's just not a good idea. Do yourself a favor and do your colleagues at work a favor by staying home. So Commissioner Merzinski?
Yeah, I mentioned the doctor earlier. There's a lot of stress right now being a Commissioner, but he's a Commissioner and a doctor. He's got a double whammy there.
Double whammy.
Kind of one of the positive things, though, that I've seen out of this is over the last week or so, the coming together of the department heads.
Yes.
Larry Levandowski and Ken Shores, every day, I hear from them about what's going on here or there. Mitch Bishop, especially Barb Mossman, even Joey, Tony Mancuso, I've been talking with him every day. Even Shaw. Just things that we talk about that's going on, and especially Darlene. But even this morning, the sheriff came in, sat down in the office and said, you know, just what's going on? How's it going? Is there anything that we need from the Sheriff's Department? Anything you can do? We need help with anything. Really, the departments come together, and, you know, we talk to each other and trying to help each other through this. I had a call yesterday from one of my Vietnam veteran friends who said, "This is kind of like a rocket attack, isn't it?" Which we've been through, I can't even count, that two things. One, you hope it's over quick, and two, you hope it don't hit me or somebody close to me.
Yeah, that's right.
It's unprecedented. And speaking of that, one other, totally off the subject here, March 29th, which is coming up here in another week or so, is the National Vietnam War Veterans Day, where we celebrate our boots-on-the-ground Vietnam veterans. And please fly your flag and recognize that as when you see a Vietnam vet, the proper thing to say is something we didn't hear when we came home, and that's welcome home. So that's all I got.
Thank you. A few comments. Dr. Cora said that I've been talking a lot tonight, and I guess I have. But I'm going to talk just for a few moments about, I guess, a message to our community. So we're all a little bit nervous, and I would say we're all, some of us are scared and some of us are worried. We're hearing lots of things. The more you turn on the TV or surf the net, you see so much coming at you that is concerning. And it's a time, I think, where we really, as Americans, need to come together. And they're telling us to stay apart, and I'm telling you to come together. But it's a time for us to really pull together as Americans. And certainly in LaPorte County, we've got something that a lot of places in America may not have, and that's LaPorte County pride. We are a county that prides itself on our community spirit. You see it at the county fair. You see it on Sunday at the farmers' markets. You see it when you go to the grocery store, where people know your name. They take a moment to say hello. This is a time for us to really, really tap into that community spirit that makes us a special place in America. You may have an elderly neighbor. You may have a neighbor that has small children that are all home from school. Those kids are hungry. They may need some supervision. Your elderly neighbor, your mom, may just need a friendly phone call, a container of homemade soup. This is a time for us to really pull together. And, you know, we talked today about how well the county team is working. But I think what's really important is that it's not just the county team. It's all of the teams across this great, large county. It's the hospital teams, the healthcare workers, the school educators who are now figuring out how to get food delivered for hungry children. It's our firefighters and our police officers and our sheriff deputies who are all doing amazing things across jurisdictions. There's no silos. When push comes to shove, we're all in this together. And, you know, I was thinking, as I was thinking about what I wanted to say tonight, you know, Americans, we love our superheroes, right? Some of you may remember the days of when comic books were the way we got our superheroes. But now, we've got animated movies, and we've got Superman, and Batman, and Spider-Man. But, you know, in times like this, our superheroes aren't those animated guys who swoop in to do great things. There are men and women in uniform. There are doctors, nurses, healthcare providers, CNAs who are in masks and lab coats and scrubs. So I want to remind people that this is the time where we need each other the most. When times are tough, we as Americans, and certainly we as Hoosiers and residents of LaPorte County, know that it's sometimes those little things that mean the most. And we need to tap into that community spirit. Together, we can do this. And I found a really great quote that I wanted to just say. "LaPorte County, let it be said that when things were at their worst, we were at our best." So with that, good evening and good night.
Thank you.